I would like to call the September 11th, 2025 regular board meeting to order at 6:00 of 3:00 P. M. In light of today being nine eleven, um, we have asked some, uh, military votes to come in and do our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Mr. David Jones will do our invocation and Mr. Steve Lawrence will do our pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in a word prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, your merciful, your kind, your just, we come before you with thanksgiving in our hearts, Lord, for bringing us here together this beautiful day. And Lord, on this day, we remember twenty-four years ago, the attacks occurred against our country on nine eleven. Lord, we, we mourn for the loss of those thousands that died in just a few hours. We ask for your comfort and mercy for those that are left behind, the loved ones, and those that still suffer from injuries of that day. Dear Lord, we thank you for our first responders, Lord, they're still facing, uh, different types of evil that's attacking our country today. We ask that you would give them protection, give them great skill. And Lord, we ask your blessing upon the Board of Education here and all the educators, that they may impart wisdom, educate our young people, give them discipline and courage to stand up for what's right, that evil may be thwarted in our country. We ask these things in your name we pray. Amen.
Please join us in our pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you. I'd like to thank our readers at tonight's meeting. Miranda Combs, Franceville, just from middle school. And Stephen Hunter, principal of Harmony Elementary School. The next item is approval of the agenda. Dr. Thomas, do you have any amendments to discuss?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? On favor?
Thank you.
The agenda has been approved. Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. At this time, I'm going to call up our assistant superintendent, Mr. Chris Parker, for the recognition portion of our program.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
We, um, you know, we were challenged, the board has challenged us to bring even more of our good people to you. So we got a great crowd tonight. I want you guys to know, all these people are here for my presentation. And in a minute, Dr. May and Ms. Aiken Smith, they're great at their job, but they're going to talk, and I'm going to bet not as many people will be here. I like that. You know, Anthony. So, um, one of the things we try to do is we have four parts of our strategic plan. The third goal area is communication engagement. We want to do things that strengthen stakeholders, internal and external, you know, our community and our, our staff. So we got a lot of great people here today. We are excited to recognize, and we're going to recognize more than we ever have today, and we're trying to do that every month. So, um, the first group, first person we'll recognize is student. We always want to start with students. So, um, we're recognizing a student every month. Uh, this month we're at the high school, and what's really exciting is I asked Mr. Collins, you know, who can we recognize? He didn't hesitate, real quickly recognized one individual, um, Devin Schumate. So Devin, hold on a second, I'm going to talk about you, I'm going to bring you up. I'm getting excited, Jen. But Devin, uh, was part of the summer honors program, University of Georgia. He's a frequent member of getting recognized. I see him all the time, either here or at school, getting honored. But today we're going to honor him again. He was at the summer honors program, and, uh, he was on the GSBA two thousand and twenty-five advisory council, Dr. Thomas, which most people, but there's only a few people in the whole state to get that honor. So we want to recognize Devin. So come on up, Devin, let's give him a round of applause.
Oh, thank y'all. Shake your hand.
It's required here.
All right, shake everybody's hand, Devin. Congratulations. We appreciate you being here, Devin. Devin is a great ambassador, we want our students to be, really is. Next, we'll recognize the teacher of the month. One thing we, we, the schools have always had teachers of the month. Uh, we hadn't always coordinated it through us as well, so we could recognize them as well. So this month, we have, you know, we have six teachers of the month. Uh, the schools recognized them, we saw it there. I, you know, we went around, had a real good-looking fellow go around and, um, give them individual stuff. And, uh, I want to highlight them real quick. Jessica Allen, Tyler Hinden, Tori Sutton, Erica Johnston, Morgan Moody, Morgan's here. Um, but our, we picked one that we recognized with our dragon award, but I wanted to show you all of those people, because we're really proud of all of them. And we're about to highlight some more here in a few weeks. Uh, but today, we're going to recognize our teacher dragon award, Mr. Nestor Rodriguez. And Mr. Rodriguez, uh, teaching special education at Tate, we heard him a couple of years ago. And I, I, Mr. Stevens just lights up talking about this guy, man. He, he's always telling me how great he's doing in the classroom and the impact he's made on some students. He, he has a lot of students with emotional behavior, uh, issues, disabilities, where he, he's, he's just phenomenal with them. I've seen him, I've seen his work, really impressed with him, and I know Mr. Stevens is really excited to have him honored tonight. So come on up, Mr. Rodriguez, we're proud of him. Yeah, he gets a basket too.
Oh, he gets a basket too?
I bet you're going to use all that, Anthony. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Shake some more members' hands. And he, right, Mr. Stevens? Mr. Stevens, he's one of the best, right? Really.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, really does a great job.
But, Mr. Parker, I have to point out that the entire Tate Spence Crew came for this group.
Oh, look at him.
That's a testimony to all the Spence teachers at Tate.
Yeah, he did a great job. Thank you. Thank you for supporting. We got a great team. We really are excited to have, you know, wish we had six hundred of these. You know, we got a lot of good people, uh, really care about kids working, we really do. You know, trying to highlight some of them as we can. So we also highlight staff members of the month. Staff members, basically anybody but a teacher at the school. The school's usually made up of about half teachers, half other people. And so we're recognizing them as well, and then some more people that work in transportation, in the central office, in food service and custodial. And so these were our staff members of the month, and selected by the principals, their supervisors. And, um, you know, I went around and got a chance to see some of them too, Mr. Teresa Stanley, Steve Cook, custodian at Tate, Jennifer Denson, our bookkeeper at JMS, Cam Ash, Tate specialist, Kristen Baker, uh, is a paraprof at the high school, but actually was having, she's certified, or she's a science major, she was working with a science teacher, uh, in a long-term situation, did a great job. Jenny Quentin, uh, great custodian at Harmony, Amanda Thrasher here with us, Ms. Andrea Wood, one of the longest-serving employees in the district, been here since it was the old high school, and working at the high school, right? And, uh, Kristen Todd in transportation. But our staff member of the month is really special to me, because I, I got the coach that showed me. I don't know, he gets getting older, and I stay the same age, but we got, um, but, so Billy Reed is a great guy. He's just a great guy, always has been. But Billy, uh, dedicates himself now to behavior tech. Behavior is a big issue since COVID, now everywhere, not just in Pickens, everywhere. Behavior gets in the way of learning more than anything. So the board has allowed us at each school to have somebody called a behavior tech. So it's a little bit, it's just a special position to goes and handle certain behaviors. And, um, so now they call him at Hill City, I go over there now, and then I say, oh, y'all know Billy? How's Billy doing? He's like, I said, it's Behavior Billy. Am I right, Billy? Behavior Billy, they get on the radio, Behavior Billy. But they, those people love Billy. He's done a great job with those young people, he's made a big impact. And so, uh, Dr. Chris Marano is proud to, to honor him, and we're proud to have him as our staff member of the month. So come on down, Billy. Behavior Billy. So, really, we're excited to recognize teachers every month and recognize staff members. And staff members, a lot of times, are custodial, food service, parapros, clerical staff. But there's certain people in the school where there's only five or six of them in the whole district, that sometimes will get lost in that shuffle and won't be in either of those groups. So we're going to recognize a different group every month for you, and the group will recognize this month as our academic coaches. So I'm excited to talk to you in a minute about what our academic coaches do, we'll bring them up here, they're all back there. Um, and, and we're going to recognize them. This is a group that work, most of them are funded through title money. This is a group where we, we're paid, um, or the government funds people that can help with instruction. So they're going into classrooms, they're helping teachers, uh, with their instruction. And so our academic coaches, this is why I asked Dr. May, like, what can I say about academic coaches? She said, well, our academic coaches play a central role in the success of our schools. They support teachers, they have resources, strategies, and feedback to strengthen instruction and student learning. They partner with teachers in education, our administrators, and they help align daily practices with the academic goals of the district. Their leadership, expertise, and commitment make a lasting impact on both teaching and learning, and we're very grateful to have them. I couldn't agree more. So they kind of connect the schools with the curriculum department, right? And then they connect the teachers with each other, because sometimes a teacher might need a little support, they don't talk to the principal about, right? So they, they got the academic coach. So we really got a good team of academic coaches, and we're going to highlight some, some academic stuff here in a minute. And a part of that is the success of these academic coaches, we're really proud of them. So, um, I'm going to bring them up at this time, Jamie Morgan at Harmony, Rhonda Lane at Hill City, Brittany Gaddis at Tate, Beth LaFon Nash at JMS, Kim Caron at Junior High, and Holly Riley at the high school. Let's give them a round of applause. Make sure you shake the board members' hands, yeah. So, as you guys know, this is the first month we're doing it like this exact format, and it's not coincidence that we brought the academic coaches first, because instruction has to be the first thing you do. So we're bringing, you know, we'll bring you the school nurses, we'll bring the maintenance team, we're going to bring you a lot of people. But it's important to bring the academic coaches first, you know, student achievement needs to be first. And so we, um, you know, I've been here a long time, I used to pass out cupcakes, you know, right? Me and Amy, and all people still remember that. Now, um, I'm up here half the time, I'm coming back later, if you guys want to stay. But we always have recognized the basketball team when they do. When I was coach football, we won the reading championship, we were three and O, last time we were three and O, I was the coach, you know that, three and O, right? But when we were undefeated football, they'd bring the football coach up here and tell you how great you are, and pat you on the back, and we do that with basketball and baseball, and, you know, everybody else that does a good job. But we hadn't had a lot of fourth grade team, second grade team, we hadn't done that a lot. And the reason is, we hadn't always been in first place in the market. So when Dr. Thomas got here, he challenged us to be the best we could be in North Georgia, all the counties that are single high school counties, there's eleven of them in North Georgia, so above metro Atlanta, there's eleven counties that are like Pickens, you know, Gilmore, Dawson, Fannin, Lumpkin, you know, White, Towns, you know, there's eleven of those. And we can keep up with them, we want to beat them all in football, basketball, but soccer, band, chorus, but we want to beat them in school too. Actually, we want to beat them in school mostly. And, um, this year, we're really proud that our fourth grade math team had the best number one scores in all that reading. So y'all can look back for that, that's good. And what we need is the people to be as excited about that as we are about winning in football. And I want to win in football too, but we need to be, next year, we want that to be even more groups, where we're in first place in those eleven counties, that's really hard to do. And, um, and to go even further with that, we looked at the, the districts just like us, which is Dawson, Lumpkin, Gilmore, and, uh, Fannin. Those counties are a lot like. And we lined up all the elementary schools. And in fourth grade math, Tate was number one, Hill City was number two, and Harmony's number three, out of like twenty-something elementary schools. So not only did we do first, we like beat them down, you know, like. So I'm really proud of our fourth grade math team, and the thing you got to remember, we're going to recognize the fourth grade math teachers in a second. But it is important to note how many people, especially in education, how many people factor into that. So these same kids had a third grade teacher, and a second grade teacher, and a first grade teacher, they got a gifted coordinator, they got special education teachers, you know, they've got, so I don't want that to be lost, especially at the elementary level. It takes a lot of people to get these young people to be a number one at that level, where we have the best three elementary schools in all of North Georgia, or something. So I do want to highlight, I wish we had, you know, all of them. But these people taught them this, that year, and so we want to recognize that, we want to make that more of a normal thing. So, um, I'll bring up our fourth grade math team, Sherry Barber, Whitney Heath, Holly Ellis, Ashton Bryant, Holly Moranas, and Gavin Gleason. Y'all come on up. Yeah, but he better leave. Gavin, you trying to dress like me? Yeah, I mean, trying to do it down here. Mr. Parker's on a roll tonight. Doing a good job. I told you, it was making entertaining, we got a crowd here. Don't worry, Amy, they won't be here, you can watch, show off. So the last thing we want to do in our recognition, we're almost finished, is we used to, back in me and Amy's day with the cupcakes, we used to have a banner that, that the principal came up here and got, they took a picture, and the principal took it back with them. And around COVID, we quit doing that because, for many reasons, but one was the principal kept forgetting to bring it to the next meeting. So, um, yeah, and, uh, so now we've compromised. Then they just started putting online who had the best attendance, and people love that Facebook post, they want to make it, whoever, and so we combined. Now, we're still putting it online who won, but we're trying to unveil at this meeting who had the best staff attendance, the best student attendance. We're going to give you a banner, so the principal will only know yet, whichever one of you win has to come up here and get your banner, take a picture. But they're going to hand that banner to Jacob, and he's going to put it on the wall all month, so it doesn't go anywhere. But you can print that Facebook post out and put it on your windows. So our staff attendance for the month, best staff attendance for the month, Hill City. So take your banner, you get a picture, hand it to Jacob. Give that thing to Jacob. We had to get Jacob too, too short to get that thing up.
Cost you eight dollars, cupcakes.
Yeah, eight dollars, cupcakes. Things work pretty good. So while we've got an audience, let me explain to you why this part's important. Students being at school is one of the main indicators of being successful, right? Like behavior, like academic, but also the teacher being at school is a big predictor on this stuff. So we recognize staff attendance. I mean, you know, and all of our attendance numbers so far this year, which we show you in the work session, were all good. Actually, every school was a little better than we were last year, and so I'm really proud of all the schools for our student, but student attendance, which is the main indicator of success for this month, Harmony Elementary. Now, Mr. Collins had to ask for a recount, I think that doing enrollment numbers were right. He said it's a little bit higher, but, you know, he can thank Mr. Thompson for that, he's, he's the counter system. So we'll leave those up all month, and next month pick some new ones. Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Um, that would conclude our recognition. You guys, all joking aside, feel free to stay, but I have to be here, but if I did, I'm not. Body clear room like Dr. Wade.
And now for our superintendents report. Dr. Thomas, I'll turn the meeting over to you for the superintendents.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gibson. At this time, we're going to call up our chief academic officer, Dr. Robbie May, to give us an update on goal area one of our strategic plan, student achievement.
So Amy and I decided we're going to dance a little, we have to compete with the supporter did there. I mean, that was like a lot, I don't know if I can compete with that. Um, so as always, I'm here to report out on goal area number one, student achievement and success. And, um, our big initiative this year is professional learning, and so I'm going to share a little bit of what we've been doing so far. Um, we had our first lit team meeting, um, of the year on September fourth, and if you remember, this is our literacy impact team. So these are teachers chosen from each of their schools to come and, um, learn a little bit about the new ELA standards and then be the leaders within their building. So it was a lot of laughing, a lot of exploring, digging into our standards. Um, this has really proven to be such a fruitful time for collaboration. Teachers get to get out of the building and dig into the wealth of resources that the Georgia DOE provides, so we were, we're just always excited to see them here, um, and we know they're doing great work in their buildings. And then in addition to that, um, we've had some planning and collaborative days, particularly at our secondary schools, so at JMS, PJ, and at the high school. So they're using, um, planning days to come out by content and by grade level, or both, and they're spending time really digging into their standards. Some of those things that as a teacher, when you've got that fifty minutes of planning, you just don't have as much time to get really in-depth and take the time, um, to look at what you need and get planned and get ahead. So our hope is that they use this time, and they have this time, to really, um, get every piece of planning they need together, look at their data, get the resources they need, and then continue to collaborate. And so far, we've heard some great things are happening. Um, I'll be at JMS tomorrow for our ELA planning with sixth grade, so it's always just great to spend time with our teachers. And then we're excited about our virtual day, um, because we are doing parent conferences again. So we've got some great screeners and data points that our, our kids have already done and our schools have. So we are looking forward to our parents coming on the twenty-sixth, we'll have an evening actually open on the night before, on Thursday, and then that morning of the twenty-sixth, parents can come and conference with their teacher. We're really hopeful to see our littles, we're hoping our kids will actually start leading these conferences and talking through with their parents about their academic goals, um, and where they're going, what they need to work on, what they need support on, how their teacher is supporting them. So we're really excited for, for virtual day. And then, as always, don't forget, we are really in this mindset that great things grow here, and we are continuing to work together consistently and collaboratively, excuse me, collaboratively, to be even more awesome than we already are. So that's it for me. Any questions?
No.
No, no cheering, dancing? No.
At this time, we'll call up our, see you at photo, Amy Smith.
I just want to say, I, I just appreciate that Parker makes not just me sound like a fossil, but him too, in the cupcake days. We did have the cupcake wars quite a bit, and, uh,
One little kid just came up and said, I owe me cupcakes. She called it like too many times.
I still can't eat cupcakes, just so you know. Um, so, forget I run it now, the seat. So as part of strategic plan, goal area number four, organizational and operational effectiveness, of course, we present these financial reports to you monthly as required by Georgia regs. Um, I'll just get this page, because I read that to you. In our general fund, our revenue collected through the end of August was fourteen point one six percent of our tentatively approved budget, and our expenditures were eight point six three percent of that same tentatively, tentatively approved budget. Though later in this meeting, we're asking for what we call initial approval, not final. Final's the last one we do of the year. They changed the name a few years ago. So I will sometimes call it final, but it's our initial approval. But we're excited to get that taken care of this month. Our consolidation of funds, um, we've had activity, this is mostly the instructional money at the school level, but because of those federal funds that flow incidents, you know, that was on a delay this year. So we're still working on that, so no transfers have been made. Um, you will see a high percentage down there at the bottom, a hundred and fifty-eight percent in instruction, but overall, uh, because we haven't made the native transfers out to those federal funds, it's absolutely normal, they are within their budget, and we're taking care of that. But we hope by next month to be doing transfers. Um, we get all the federal information submitted to the, uh, feds as they liken in our consolidated application, and get the approval so we can get that transfer process started. As I love to, this is where you cheer, we have no debt in this system. Our capital outlay, excuse me, we collected, now this was a great month for collections. In the month of August, we collected eight hundred forty-four thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety cents. It did not beat our previous high, but it's up there.
Is it the second highest?
It is, I would say yes, it is probably the second highest. Um, I'll, I'll check on that and let you know that for sure, though. We had to transfer funds from general fund for four hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. And what that was, we had some items we had spent in SBOSS that were general fund eligible. We had the room in the FY twenty-five budget, and we swapped those, but it was after June thirtieth, so it, we had to do the reporting on here like this, so I just want to let y'all know what that is. We just swapped places with those funds because we had, we were allowed to, and we had the money. We earned interest of seven hundred fifty-four dollars and six cents. Total expenditures were one million, one hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred twenty dollars and ninety-three cents. And the month in SBOSS balance was nine million, four hundred eighteen thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars and ten cents. Our special revenue, which includes federal grants and our food service program, we collected two point three six percent of our tentatively approved budgeted revenue, and expended nineteen point seven six percent of those funds. Don't worry, those are those cool grants, we have to spend it, and then we get the reimbursement. Yeah, I hear Beth out there. Um, our SBOSS collection, we are on month forty-three, our total collection is a little over thirty-two million, and you know our cap on this, uh, we affectionately call SBOSS six, um, is thirty-five million. When I take the average and run it out through the end of the calendar year, we should cap out, which means we will hit the thirty-five million mark or more in December. Um, if we cap out before December, we still get to collect through year end, calendar year end. If we don't, and we go into January, we get to collect a whole nother quarter. I do not anticipate that we will be collecting that first quarter of next year. I think we will cap out in December, and that would end SBOSS six on the collection part and revenue side. We still have, um, as of today, we still have about eleven million, seven hundred thousand dollars in SBOSS six, and we will continue to collect funds. So we'll still be spending that money for a while, we've got about a two-year window to do that. So, um, our, our average for the twelve, past twelve months is seven hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars and thirty-five cents, and our largest collection was still January of twenty-five. I hope that January of twenty-sixth, or maybe when Chick-fil-A opens, that we'll be, so, come on with Chick-fil-A. But that's all I have, do you have any questions?
Could you give us quickly, because I don't, like, the, uh, page about you?
I can. Uh, we have not received it. I, um, have received certain information, I do know, um, the tax assessor's office, um, there had been an exchange of information to the tax commissioner, but it has, because of House Bill, uh, five eighty-one, um, there are a lot of changes when it comes to those, um, home state exemptions. Um, I do have some information, it does, if, if any of the information that I have seen is correct, and I have, I don't know for sure that it is, they've shared some information, but they have found some errors, because it's a wholly system and it's a wholly process. So they are still having a little bit of heartburn getting those numbers, uh, to us. So they are still having a little bit of heartburn getting those numbers to us. They have not come to us in an official format at all. They actually have to go back to the assessor. We hope to have a back, or the assessor looks to have them back to the commissioner late this week, early next week, and the commissioner has to have them for a few days to do their thing. So we might get it next week, the official digest. It is not official until I receive this signed official document from Mr. Reeves, the tax commissioner that was given. The numbers I did see over doubled the exemption amount based on that House bill, if they are correct. I don't, I do not have a way to verify if they're correct at this time and it was not an official document. So I'd say we just need at this moment hold and we're anxiously awaiting that digest coming in so that we can do our tentative mileage and our final mileage. I do know that the county tax commissioner had asked for an extension on the submission of the digest that now the drop dead date is October 1st. We, when we received it, we still have to have a tentative approval. Then it has to be advertised for one week, seven full days prior to the final approval. As well, most of the time we're doing our final or our initial budget and our final mileage at the same time, same approval on the same meeting night. Tonight, we are asking for initial approval of the budget because we have a deadline of September 17th to have it into the state in its full 8,000 line detail. So we must get it approved. And we, if we have to do a budget minimum, we'll come back shooting with that because the revenue that is generated from those property taxes must be close to accurate what we put in our budget. So if it is significantly different than what we received, what the documents, what the calculation, you know, is, we will have to do an amendment. But y'all will of course be involved in all every single step of the way with that. And I'll keep you apprised, of course, I'm keeping Dr. Thomas in the loop. I mean, as soon as it walks in, I'm ready. I've got it ready, born, ready to go and we'll have it, I'll have it, I can have it done the day I get the numbers. So that's, that's where we are at the moment. So love it behind, no long.
A lot not normal, but it's not awful.
No, I mean, we have not received the information, so. Any other questions? That's all I have.
Ms. Smith, thank you very much.
That was Fox.
At this time, we'll call up someone who needs an introduction, Mr. Chris Parker for an operations and construction report.
Glad I can make an impact on you guys. While I'm telling jokes, I will tell you, it is important to highlight some of the really good things happening, like Amy is correct and the school system has no debt. We do have, we're upgrading a ton of facilities. We'll talk to you about that tonight. And we got a lot of academic things to be proud of, you know, and so you guys should be proud of that. Starts with the board and the superintendent. So don't let my jokes get in the way of that, but that is good. You know, in Goal Area Four, we do operations where we work with finance, technology, all our different operational groups come together to make sure we're effective and efficient with our resources. And we're going to talk to you about four things today, all pretty short. So first thing we talk about is our capital projects planning update, which we try to at least once a year publicly tell you, hey, these are the things we've talked about. It's kind of where we are. So this time last year, we gave you a timeline of some projects and we've hit every one of those, including some that are finished now and some are still going on for the timelines we gave you and they've all been under budget. Proud of that. But we want to tell you what we're doing now. You know, we're in phase three part of the remodeled high school now. It's the third summer is what that means coming up. But when you do a project like that, that's what it takes. You can only work so much in the summer. So phase one and two are finished. That's where the bulk of the work is. If I was putting a percentage on it, I'd say 85% of the high school project is finished, but the last 15 is really important. There's the last parts of different things that we're doing and that'll happen throughout the breaks this year and then finishing the coming summer. Hill City is getting a full remodel. The school's not, not high school, can happen in one summer. And so Hill City is in a full remodel. We've brought you the RFP, we've already approved that. They're in what's called a GMP process right now. They're getting bids, are going to bring you a price that says this is the maximum. GMP meaning the guaranteed maximum price you would pay for that, last the board to approve that in the next couple of months. When they do that, we'll start all the breaks working right then and they'll be finished by the first day of school. Hill City have a new building down there, essentially ceilings, floors, bathrooms. And we're looking at some of the paint, but we're looking at some of the other things. Looking at desks, we're looking at cabinets, we're looking at playground, you know, and seeing the things we can do. And we got a good plan in place, met with our whole team, Mr. Williams, Mr. Bole, Dr. Kretschmer, Stacy Williams, and I working real close to have a great, really great project at Hill City. We're really excited what that's going to look like one year from now. You're going to be really proud of that. Tate Elementary had a three-phase remodel too, but it was all mini. Like they didn't have the high school thing, but over three different years, we were doing things to remodel Tate. Tate's a little different school, as y'all know. Next year is 100th school year. We can't find a school in the state, it probably is one, maybe people, the millions of people watching this will find one and tell us, but we won't. If there's a school that has been a schoolhouse in that building for 100 years in a row, I can't find one in the state, there might be one other one. I think there's one that's close, we're working on it. But Tate would be 100 years in a row in that building. School's been around there longer, but that one burned or something. But the building that's there right now was built in 1926, seven school years. So so by that 100th year, we had targeted as many things as we can do, we're doing. So the first year was HVAC, something nobody saw, but was helpful. Last year, this past summer, was the lower building floor in the parking lot and playgrounds, which we're still working on playing. And then next summer is going to be that main building, which is where you got to put on the, the really kick gloves, you know. But, but we're going to do the floors in there, we'll do some painting, we'll do some of the classrooms. So that's all things you guys have already approved, but just where we're working on. What's coming to you soon is HVAC replacement at JMS and Junior High. We've got, it's a big one, it's a big one, a big remodel. And that project, because of the hard work of Stacy Williams, Chris Williams, people like that, that'll be strictly funded through capital outlay money, like state money. We'll have to pay and they'll pay us back, but it's through us capturing money over time, we're going to better replace almost, it's the vast majority of them, right, Mr. Williams?
Over 100 units.
Yeah, at those two schools. So really excited about that. And then they're really excited that it won't cost the Pickens taxpayers anything over time. So future projects that are coming, we already, they're approved from you guys tentatively. We just hadn't gotten to the documents yet because they're in the next coming years. You know, that HVAC project is this year. Those other projects, those current projects will all be finished this, in the next 12 months. These projects are a little bit further out than that, but they're on our list. Harmony Elementary remodel, where Harmony's getting the same treatment Hill City did. So you guys understand in public that every 20 years is a good number to do this whole paint, floor, ceiling, bathroom, look at all the desks, stuff like that. High school was built in 1998. On that timeline, probably should have been done in 2018, but we pushed it back. So Hill City was built in 2003, so it should have been 2023. But Harmony was built in 2006, so we're going to be closer to that 20-year mark. So the board challenged us to up the facilities and we're having to catch up. So we're doing maybe 10 years worth of work in three or four years, but we are going to be there. So by the time we get to that 2027 or some mark, you're going to see that we're back on schedule with that 20-year mark between the schools being remodeled. And then we're excited about our college and career academy. This was something that we talked about in the East Foss. It was something that we wanted to do for a long time. We actually had four or five different options to do it in the school, like different areas we could renovate and had nothing to do with the East Foss. But then with the community spoke and we felt like we had more, board challenged us to have more of a presence for a standalone building, college and career. And that's in the works. The East Foss passed and that's what we're going to do in this Foss, which would be SPOS seven, right? So the one that's starting now that the public just approved, we will have a college and career academy. The timeline, we're still working on, but that is, that is tentatively approved by the board, by our operations. We're, will be in this stage now of figuring out what that looks like, looking at other districts our size that have things like that, what they offer, getting an architect's, make sure we can design it and make sure we can afford it within what they want. So we're going to give them the best, like everything we've done, we're going to give them the best thing we can get, we're proud of. We're proud of the buildings looking good. We're proud of them being really nice. And so we're going to build, if we're going to build it, it's going to be nice. So we're looking forward to that college and career academy, you know, being a big part of what we do, probably long after I'm gone, long after Amy's gone, you know, and there's going to be some other people up here that don't know about cupcakes, but they don't know about the college and career academy. So I'm going to go on three other things real shortly, but do you guys have any questions about the capital timeline before we go to that? Okay. School-based health center, we mentioned a couple of times, we're good there. As far as operational, and we, like Jacobs, had that project up, we've given them the CO, we're good to go. Really excited to see what that building can do. We're going to make it, we're going to put some signage up, we're going to do some different things, make it look really appealing, but that's going to be our good resource for our students. We had custodian training this month. So every year at this time when we had a virtual day, before the Jeep fence, you know, we had a virtual day and we get all of our custodians and the whole district together, get them some biscuits and bring in safety experts from our work comp company and go through scenarios, here they're playing the telephone game, which people in Pickens County are really good at. And Miss Deborah up there and Jacob did a good job facilitating that. We're really excited about some of the things we're offering our custodians. Our custodian turnover rate is unbelievably low. I told you, I mean, for compared to other companies our size. So I mean, we're maintaining our custodians, we're proud of them, they're proud to be here. Recognize, two of them are on that employee of the month list I showed you. Safety meeting this time of year, this time of year in operations is a big time for school safety for many reasons. I had this planned for a few days, not, nothing to do with today, but we, the first few weeks of school, you finalize your emergency response teams and plans. Okay, we've been doing this since 2019 really well, but in the past year, because of the thing in Appalachia and some other things, it's become state mandatory that you do these things. And so Jennifer Wilson heads that up. Jennifer is fantastic at this, she's got a background in it. And you go, each school has an emergency response team. So there's a committee of people at each school that meet and go through the safety plan. This would be like, what are we going to do if this happens? What are we going to do if this happens? And these people know this, like they're not just, it's in just, you know, going through the motions. We deploy those things, sometimes daily, you know, sometimes the fire alarm just goes off, because it does. And sometimes, you know, the little badge thing, I mean, we're proud that we know what to do. And so I appreciate Jennifer doing that. I want you guys to know, it's been a lot of hard work behind the scenes. Those plans have been submitted to the state, per state law, we submit it to our state. We've gotten, last year, we did an optional GMA assessment, like we brought in GMA and they looked at everything, told us things we do better, which we don't have to do that, we chose to do it. Been able to make a lot of those changes. And, you know, I put our emergency response plans up against anybody and our people caring about them up against anybody. So really proud of that. I want you guys to know we're working on that. And thank you from our team. I mean, again, I let my jokes take away from that. We've got some people really working hard here in our departments, but in curriculum, in finance, you know, our superintendent works really hard and we really, really feel like we're moving in the right direction. Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Parker. And just a final couple of comments. Go ahead. Some things that have gone on the last few days. I would like to piggyback on what Mr. Parker said about our school-based health clinic. It's located on campus of the Junior High School and Good Samaritan, who is our partner in this endeavor, that they plan to have it open Monday. And so we're really excited about that. We're grateful to have them as a, as a partner and looking forward to having Dragon Care provide additional medical access to our kids and their families. So really excited about Dragon Care coming on board. As you're well aware, our school year is well underway. I can't believe it's mid-September already, but it's continuing to go very strong. We have got everything in full motion from the work that's being done in our classrooms with our teachers and our students, to our students and teachers involved in the fine arts and activities, to our student athletes and our coaches. And just one quick data point I want to share, you know, for the second week in a row, our Pickens Dragons are ranked number one in the state in AAA football. Best little power. How about that? What was that sign? And then just a few upcoming dates, we do have, next week is homecoming week for the high school, homecoming parade, which is a tradition that was brought back last year. Will continue next Wednesday, homecoming parade through downtown, followed by our homecoming festival. Monday, September the 22nd is Georgia Reads Day. This is sponsored by the Literacy Council of Georgia and will participate in that. On the 26th of September, as Dr. May had mentioned, that is our student conference day, which was something our teachers requested. And so there'll be a virtual day for our kids. And like Dr. May said, we're hoping to get to the point where that becomes student-led conferences, where students are the ones having the conversation with the parents, with the teachers facilitating. So we're getting closer and closer to that. Friday, October the 3rd will be our work session for October. And then Thursday, October the 9th is our regular scheduled board meeting. And then fall break is the 13th to 17th. That's all half a superintendent comments. Ms. Gibson.
All right, we've got a bit of the action items. Approval of personal action report, do I have a motion to approve the personal action report as presented?
Somewhere.
Do I hear a second? Top second? Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Approval of the FY26 initial budget, do I have a motion to approve the FY26 initial budget as presented?
Somewhere.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Our next action item is approval of an RMP that passed, would you like to speak on that?
Yes, ma'am, I will, thank you. So this is an RFP for any, for professional real estate broker service. And just so we're aware, this is for anything that we may decide to buy or sell in the coming years. And this was a very, very rigorous process that we had set up. And we understand this is something that can be very, very difficult to award. So we formed a committee consisting of district leaders and we had three excellent options in this particular RFP. It's all that.
Great point, yes.
Do I have a motion to approve DTS paid as the real estate broker for services pertaining to RFP number 2025-003 as presented?
Somewhere.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, the next five items are requests for final approval of several policies. Dr. Thomas?
Okay, yes, ma'am. So in August, we brought you five policies that needed approval based on our guidance that we received from GSBA, the Georgia School Board Association. And per our board policy, we bring requests to revisions for policy at one regular board meeting. And then we allow for input to the next regular board meeting where we can formally approve. And just so you know, for these five that we have on the action item agenda, we've not received any public input on these fives. This is what we're doing tonight. Gotcha.
Okay. Request for final approval of policy GAEV, sexual harassment of employees. Do I have a motion to get final approval of policy GAEV as presented?
Somewhere.
Do I hear a second?
Second. Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Next is request for final approval of board policy JCAC, sexual harassment of students. Do I have a motion to get final approval of policy JCAC as presented?
Somewhere. Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Request for final approval of policy GARH, employee leaves and absences. Do I have a motion to get final approval of policy GARH as presented?
Somewhere.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Request for final approval of policy IFBG, internet acceptable use. Do I have a motion to get final approval of policy IFBG as presented?
Somewhere.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Request for final approval of policy JB, student attendance. Do I have a motion to get final approval of policy JB as presented?
Somewhere.
Thanks, Mr. Kirk. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, Dr. Thomas, did you give us some information on the two new policies that are requested and the one revision that is on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So for the past two months, we have been in the process of auditing our policies, which means we look at our policies and then we make those revisions if they're needed, as well as add new policies if those things are needed. Policy JBCD is a policy on transfers and withdrawals that's now required by the Georgia School Board Association, GSBA. So that's a new policy. Policy IBB is a policy on charter schools in which we should have had priors now. So that's another new policy. And lastly, there has been a revision made of policy GBIA, which refers to the teacher evaluation deals. And so GSBA has been at these new policies as well as this revision. And our question, if these three policies sit, get a public input and so October board meeting, we can vote to officially approve. And Ms. Gibbs.
Request for new policy, policy JBCD transfers and withdrawals. Do I have a motion to place policy JBCD out for public review until the October 9th, 2025 regular board meeting as presented?
Somewhere.
Do I have a second?
Top second.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor. Request for new policy, policy IBB charter schools. Do I have a motion to place policy IBB out for public review until the October 9th, 2025 regular board meeting as presented?
Somewhere.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor. Do I have a motion, request for revision of policy GBIA teacher evaluation appeals? Do I have a motion to place policy GBIA out for public review until the October 9th, 2025 regular board meeting as presented?
Somewhere.
Do I have a second?
Thanks.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor. Onto the consent agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda tonight. Financial reports, this school year 26 CTAE local plan, this school year 26 local board training plan, out of state overnight field trips, minutes from the following board meetings, October 20, I'm sorry, August 14th, 2025, call board meeting at 5:00 PM. The August 14th, 2025 regular board meeting at 6:00 PM. September 5th, 2025, call board work session at 1:00 PM as presented. And then we have surplus CTAE from Hill City Elementary Media Center and from our warehouse. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Somewhere. Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor. Public participation, Dr. Thomas, have we received any requests for public participation at science meetings?
No, ma'am, we have not.
Okay. Now, board, listen to the board comments. Does anyone have a comment?
Just say it's exciting to see all the recognition. I like that. It's good, it's good to celebrate a people. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, consider that it is Patriot Day. Um, I had a conversation on the way here tonight with a parent from junior high that's worried about the threat today. And I assured him, just like I know this year, people are community. We have high security without being interested. Once they get our buildings, our kids are safe. Thank God for that.
Absolutely top priority.
Anything else?
Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Somewhere.
Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor. We are adjourned at 6:57 PM.